Are you going to call this meeting to order? Before we move on to business, I think it would be appropriate at this time if we have a moment silent for the children of the residential schools. Okay, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Item two, disclosure, disclosure pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. I see none. Item three, approval or amendments of meeting agenda. Be it resolved that council approved the agenda of the regular meeting dated June the 29th, 2021 as presented. Can I have a mover in the second or please? Bill? And Pat?
Point of order, your worship.
Go ahead.
I understand two councillors have asked to have an item added to the agenda. And it would seem since this is the area where we would put in amendments of our meeting agenda, this would be the appropriate place to have them request that it be added.
Go ahead, John, if you want to answer.
Thank you, your worship. The presently, we have a request that came in about four days after the cutoff point where the agenda and the resolutions are presented to the public. So knowing that the current agenda and resolutions wrote there posed a bit of a problem on what we should do. So the solution that I think we should follow is under our procedural bylaw where we have a provision called other business where you can put new business to the floor. But because, because new business and especially if it's consequential, that has not been forward to the public brings a lot of responsibility in council. So the other business section under 6.7 requires that before council debates, the resolution that was submitted, there has to be a resolution authorizing that debate and that resolution has to be unanimous. And it's not debatable. So the way to do that is to agenda amend the agenda as it stands now to add 10.5 and 10.6. The one resolution that will allow for the discussion and 10.6, the resolution to be debated. So to affect this change, then the resolution, if that is the support of council, then obviously the discussion, then this resolution should read approve as amended. And the minutes will reflect the discussion that just took place.
Go ahead, councillor Wilcox.
With the utmost respect to our CAO, I strongly disagree with that interpretation of the agenda process for amendments. And I would ask that we put the matter to council for their consideration to allow it or not. To accept John's version or to do it according to what the agenda says we can do.
Okay, well, I don't, certainly I don't mind speaking to that. I'm not sure exactly what you meant by that last comment councillor Wilcox, except to say that the procedural bylaw is very clear. When there is a situation like this, there is a provision under the procedural bylaw that allows it and as far as I can tell. And believe me, I've looked into the situation closely and have obtained a solicitor's opinion on it also spoke to a solicitor. The other business is the only way to address this situation. Technically, it was a tough decision to actually put it on the agenda, the resolution, because it came so late after the cutoff date. And because of that lateness and because of the issue of if it's not handled this way, then we could be under attack for transparency in that we have a consequential new business item that the public was not given the same opportunity to review as they are with all other resolutions.
Hey, does that, is that clear councillor Wilcox or go ahead?
John's point is clear. I just entirely disagree with his point. And I would suggest using an agenda to muzzle to councillors is inappropriate. I think they have a right to be heard. They're elected to speak up for their constituents. They're trying to do that. We are a council. It's our agenda. We control the agenda. We are not the tool of the agenda. It is our tool. And I think council has a right to decide which way council wants to go.
Just on that council has the full right to pass resolutions, whether they're in compliance with the procedural bylaw or not. That's correct.
And so I ask that we poll council to see how they feel.
Okay, do we want to vote or do we want to just get an opinion from everyone?
A vote is good. It's clear.
I second the vote option.
Can I speak for a second? I'm not sure what the resolution is saying. Is the resolution then going to be adopted agenda as presented or adopt the agenda as amended?
I believe it's an amendment from the two councillors.
Okay, can we drop a resolution for that then? Is that going to get us in trouble or?
I'm afraid I'm still not clear what the, what the resolution will say.
To allow the motion wanting to be presented by two councillors to be allowed to be amended and attached to the agenda.
Okay, so the amendment then will bypass the procedural bylaw and allow council to have the actual resolution placed under 10.5, the full resolution without the requirement of the qualifier under other businesses. Is that what we're looking at? In other words, are you asking that the requirement to have unanimous approval be withdrawn and that the resolution be presented to the council? Is that what we're writing?
Well firstly, John, again, I disagree with your opening comment there like the format for our council meetings, the agendas is in our procedural manual and line three says approval or amendment of meeting agenda. The word amendment means we can amend it at this point. I don't see the need to go anywhere else to do that. And I'm not worried about this particular issue. I'm worried about any issue that comes before council. Council has to have the ability to amend an agenda. For one thing, you know, you were saying was four days between the cutoff date and the time it was presented. A lot of things change in four days, and that is why it says we can amend it there because it can be implemented in times of change or need or shortness of time. All kinds of reasons why we might want to amend in a meeting and it allows it. It does not say we can't do it there. It says that's what that's for. I'm just saying, let's follow the policy. Always.
That's, that's fine. If I can't agree that you're following the policy. This is in violation of procedural bylaw, but if council wants that resolution to go forward in, in without the provisions of other business, I can write the resolution that way. But all I'm saying is that it is in violation contrary to what you're saying. It is in violation of our procedural bylaw and it puts the public in an awful situation where such a consequential decision is being made when they knew, did not know that it was on the agenda with other items. So to be clear, I can, I can draft the resolution. Putting it on the agenda as it stands. And if council wants to debate that, it would be done under 10.5.
Go ahead.
I wonder, your worship, if we could put it to the two councillors who wanted to put forward this motion for their opinion?
Yeah, we can let them have a chance, I guess, to speak on it.
Thank you.
Go ahead councillor Johnson.
Through your worship. I think this is a situation of the worst kept secret. I believe the public is quite aware of the discussion we're going to have. And I understand CAO Hodgson's explanation. However, I do understand councillor Wilcox frustration with this. Because as past precedent serves, as long as we've been serving to this day, we've had the ability to amend our agendas without concern. I would like to discuss this matter and I can't go into detail now and I'd like to do it seemingly few hurdles to jump. And I believe that this in particular would be although procedural, I believe it's a possible roadblock to this discussion. And I think that this discussion, considering its importance needs to be had. So I would appreciate it if we could do that in a manner that's conducive to having that discussion. And I would like the amendment to the agenda to reflect that.
Okay, who else wanted to speak on that? Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, through you, your worship. I think it's important that we speak on this tonight. And there looks like there's a clause in the amendment of the meeting agenda. And that's the way I would like it to go so that it can be spoken to tonight.
Okay. You write a resolution to amend the agenda? Okay, be it resolved that the meeting agenda be amended to include 10.5, the Canada Day celebration night. Mover to second or please? Matt and Bill? All in favor? Harry? We'll discuss it under 10.5.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, approval of the minutes. Mover to second or please? Angela, go. A discussions. All in favor? Is there any business arising from the minutes? None? In Colorado, I remember to the general public, we have not received any. Delegation to the presentations, we have none. Business arising designation participation, we also have none of that.
Oh, sorry. In item seven, no presentation in 2020 financials. Oh, good work. We're visiting.
Yeah, sorry, I missed all of that. Okay, sorry Danielle, you are the delegation.
No problem. Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I won't take offense. Okay, so you should all have a package of some of the components of your financial statements. We're going to review them in some detail. If anybody has any additional questions or anything like that, do cut me off as I go along here. The first page we're going to review that was in your package is says page 21 in the top right hand corner. So this is your statement of operations. You are required to present your financial statements under the PSAB method. But you don't budget that way. So there are some differences when it comes to capital expenditures, long-term debt. So what we do is we take your statement of operations and we re-conform it here to the way that you budget so that we can compare apples to apples. Makes it a little bit easier for you to look at. So the middle column is your actual 2020, the left-hand side is your budget and the right-hand side is 2019. And this will show the activities of the town for the year. So what did you do? So under operating revenues, municipal taxation 585,000. So your tax rate went up a percent. Your assessment went up 2% and that generated additional tax revenues of about 3%. Water and sewer fees 548,000. There was no change in the rate, but there was a $12,000 write-off. That's what created the difference in the two amounts. Policing fees 368,000. There was no change in the policing fees as well. User charges 110,000 or everything else that you charge your ratepayers for, and they stayed about the same at 110,000. Provincial grants a million 32 down from the prior year in 2019. If you remember, you received a modernization grant, which was quite a bit. It was about a quarter million. So it's in that number. This year, in the million 32, 900,000 is your Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund and it remained the same compared to last year. And that's your biggest unconditional grant. There was also 77,000 of COVID funding to help with COVID related pressures. And there was about 31,000 related to storage chip Ontario, which is for your recycling. Federal grants 29,717. That is Canada Day money, summer student funding and your library received some federal funding. Keep in mind, the library financial statements are in these financial statements as well. Revenue from other municipalities, 24,484, almost identical to last year. Investment income 6,354. Down from the prior year, you actually received quite a bit of interest on your OCIF copper funding last year. And since you've now spent that funding, you didn't make as much money on it. Penalties and interest on taxes 51,535. You'll see in a minute that your taxes receivables did go down. But the timing of your receivables obviously allowed for additional interest to be charged. Provincial offence act revenues 7248. So these are fines and penalties that you would have, that you would have received or your portion would have been received from the Sea of Twisting Shores and it dropped to about 7248. Loss from government business partnership. So this is your 50% portion of the loss of the solar project. So it's unfortunately part of your financial statement. So it kind of skews your numbers. So keep that in mind when we're looking at your bottom line after and I'll kind of go through that with you at the end. But that number there is basically just a bookkeeping entry. So Cobalt has not funded the project in any way and there's been no cash transfers or anything like that. But the portion of the loss does have to be reflected in your financial statements. Other 76,714, which is down a bit from last year's other, which is basically just a catch-all category of other income that you would have received. So total operating revenues 2.7 million. We had capital revenues, provincial grants of 182,000. So that would be your OCIF and your Main Street funding. Federal grants of 73,137, which is all gas tax. Proceeds from long-term debt 271,000. There's a new F-150 and wheel loader that were financed. And then proceeds from sale of tangible capital asset 25,000. That would be the proceeds from the sale of the old loader. So total capital revenues 552,000 for total revenues of 3.3 million. Under operating expenditures, general government, everything that has to do with running the municipality itself, 635,000. Your wages were up about 56,000. Protection to persons and properties 530,528. You have $20,000 worth of COVID-related expenditures. That was kind of PPE and barriers and things like that, that you had to incur. Your OPP costs went up about $10,000. Transportation services 499,000. So everything that has to do with roads. If you all remember the winter of 2019, I think it was down Snowmageddon. So your snow removal fees were down 30,000 in 2020 compared to 2019. So you had some much higher snow removal costs in that year. Your transit did go up about 17,000. A lot of that I think related to COVID-related pressures and different ways of I think that the free transit and that kind of stuff. So you did pay an extra 17,000 to the transit. And then your wages were down about 30,000 because there was an allocation basically with your water. So we'll see in a minute that in environmental, your water wages are actually quite a bit higher. So your public works people actually spent more time on the water than they did on transportation. So that was just an allocation of where the wages are recorded. Environmental services 666,000. So your wages here were up about 50,000. Your landfill costs were up about 20,000. Your hydro costs related to the water treatment plant were up about 20,000. So that and your aqua costs were up about 10,000. Health services 146,769. If you all remember back in 2019, the health unit provided you with a refund. So in 2019, you were refunded about 38,000. So now we're back up to the normal amounts. Social and family services. So that's everything else related to DSAB other than land ambulance. Land ambulance is up with health services. And it's sitting at 117. So just down slightly from 2019. Recreation and cultural services 135,000. You actually still had some arena expenses back in 2019, just a little bit of it. And then your museum expenses and contributions were down about 22,000 in 2020. Planning and development to hold $497, which isn't really worth talking about. So total operating expenditures 2.7 million. We take your total revenues less your expenditures. Oh, sorry. I forgot capital expenses. We have capital expenses of 556,000, which was the work on the trailer park sewer. You did some water treatment plant upgrades. You have a new Ford F-150. You have a new to you wheel loader. And you did some work on some doors and windows, I believe, with the Main Street funding at various buildings. Long-term debt repayments, you repaid 41,928 dollars of long-term debt for total expenditures of 3.3 billion. So if we take your total revenues, lesser total expenditures, we do end up with a small deficit of 27,301. But based on what I said a while ago about your solar loss of 92,000, if we ignore that component of your financial statements, you end up with a surplus of about 65,000. And that's more reflective of your operations because there's no direct involvement in the solar project itself. They just have to be in your financial statements. So you do end up with 65,000 to the good. Any questions on that? Nope, clear as mud. Next page is your statement of financial position, which is page four in the top right-hand corner. So it says where you are at a point in time. So on December 31st, you had just under a million to the bank. You've cashed in the rest of your investments and transferred them to your bank account during the year. So they're sitting at zero. Your taxes receivable are down to about 231,000. So that's always a good thing. Your accounts receivable are sitting at 143. We keep in mind that at the end of 2019, you had a lot of OCIF copper funding left to be received. And that's why that number was such, such a large number in 2019. In 2020, the majority of that balance is about 64,000 in water receivables and about 40,000 relates to your HST rebate. Which is basically just a rebate that you receive on the HST that you pay on your expenditures and it just hasn't been received yet on December 31st. So you have total financial assets of just under a million six. Accounts payable and accrued liabilities. So who did you owe money to on December 31st? That was 394,000. Last year, we had the water treatment project, plant project that was in there and you had a huge holdback to Patterson still outstanding at the end of 19, which isn't there this year. This year, your accounts payable are more normalized and they include two months of OPP because you always get billed after the fact along with your normal expenditure base that usually gets paid in January that relate to December. Deferred revenue 190,225. So deferred revenue is cash you've received in your bank account for a specific project or purpose that you haven't spent yet. So it has stipulations attached to it and that's 190,225. So in there is 20,000 COVID funding related to 2021. So the government made sure to give it to you on December 15th of 2020, I believe, to be used for 2021. So you've got the cash, but it's geared for next year. There's also 168,000 of OCIF funding that can be carried forward to another year and about $2,000 related to the RBC future launch project, which I believe has now all been spent in 2021. Deferred revenue obligatory reserve funds is a fancy word for gas tax. So you have 66,946 of gas tax. Again, you've received it in your bank account, but it hasn't been spent yet. So that's to carry forward to 2021. Municipal debt 291,201. So a jump from last year, we have two new pieces of debt, one for the new to you wheel loader and the other one for the Ford F-150. There's a small $20,000 loan left on Lane Street, but I believe it's actually paid now or it's about to be, it's finishing up in 2021. So you'll be left with those two pieces of debt for now. Deficiency government business partnership. So this is your share of the accumulated loss in the solar project to December 31st and that was sitting at 376,000. Again, this is mostly just a bookkeeping entry because there was actually no physical cash or contributions made to the solar project from the town of Cobalt. So this is just basically your portion of the loss that's on paper. Total liabilities a million three. So if we take your total assets, lesser total liabilities, you're left with a net financial asset position of 253,000. So that's your financial position. This is where you start 2021 with is the 253. There is a drop from 510, obviously, and the majority of that drop is actually the current year deficit and the change in your long-term debt. So because you've incurred some, some new long-term debt, it decreases your financial position. No problem with incurring debt. You're actually municipalities that doesn't have a whole lot of debt considering your a city center, that kind of stuff. So it's just a matter of making sure that you're budgeting for principal and interest payments, which has never been a concern with how you're budgeting. And overall financing with debt is perfectly acceptable even for a municipality. I think that's how we've all kind of purchased our first houses and makes sense to pay back over time. Any questions on that? Okay, the other numbers on that page is inventory and tangible capital assets, tangible capital asset being whopping almost 16 million. We tend to say to ignore those numbers. That's the historical cost of all of your assets less depreciation. So what you paid to build a road 150 years ago isn't as relevant today. So your asset management plan, it's a much better exercise and a better document to review and pay attention to so that you know what needs to be replaced, when, how much it's going to cost now and how you plan on paying for it. Any other questions? Okay, page 14 now, top right-hand corner. So the accumulated surplus note, which is note 11. So basically we are looking at the net financial asset number, which is 253, which is at the center of the note. So if we move up from that 253,686 net financial asset position, just above it is the unfinanced municipal debt. So whoever's pointing will scroll down a little bit more, down, down, whoop, right there, down a little bit. Yeah. Down a little bit. Yeah, so to two ninety-one is the long-term debt. So just below that is the debt financial asset number. So if we take the net financial asset number back out the long-term debt, which is right above it, that gives us a financial position of five hundred and forty-four thousand, eight eighty-seven. So that five forty-four, six, no, it's an eight, eight eighty-seven is basically your financial position ignoring long-term debt. Um and that's what you get to allocate to reserves. Um so you've got a working capital reserve of one hundred and eighty-one. There's a sewer wetlands reserve. There's a recreation reserve, a library reserve. Uh you do have a small general municipal deficit of about fifty-seven thousand. Uh there's a library surplus, a cemetery surplus. The sewer has a surplus, which we'll review in a minute separately. And the water plot, the waterworks is also in a surplus. So if you add up all those things, you do end up with a position of five hundred and forty-four thousand, which would be what you're starting off twenty twenty-one with, ignoring long-term debt. It's okay to ignore long-term debt because as a council, you've decided you're going to repay that long-term debt over a period of time. It's not all due tomorrow. Um so that's a better reflection of the position that you're in. Any questions on that? Okay, next page is page twenty-two in the top right-hand corner. This is your waterwork system. Uh so it shows the revenues, the expenditures for the year. So you've got the sale of water to Cobalt Residence of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, the sale of water to Coleman at about twenty thousand interest charges on collection about thirteen. You've got some provincial grants for capital, which was OCIF. Some federal grants, which was gas tax of forty-eight thousand, and that related to some of the water treatment plant upgrades that were ongoing. So total revenues of six hundred and sixteen thousand. We had salaries and benefits, a hundred and seventy. So this is where we had a um a lot of overtime or overages in water, when it came to salaries and benefits, and that's why your transportation wages were down, and it was just an allocation of your public works. Materials, supplies and utilities, ninety-one thousand contracted services, your aqua fees were up, um and that ends up being a total of one hundred and twenty capital expenditures of two hundred and twenty-four, which is your water treatment plant upgrades. So you end up with an annual surplus of nine thousand, three twenty-five and an accumulated surplus of two hundred and forty-five, nine sixty-eight. So the system appears to be self-sustaining, but without knowing what the ten-year plan is on capital uh requirements on the system, um hard, difficult to say whether this is an adequate accumulated surplus or if additional um surplus is required to maintain the system and uh put aside for capital. Any questions on that? Next page, page twenty-three in the top right-hand corner is your sewer wetlands. User fees, one hundred and sixty-six thousand. You have federal grants of twenty-five thousand, which is gas tax. Um that was related to the trailer park sewer system that got an upgrade. Salaries and benefits, sixty-two thousand. Some material supplies and utilities of fifty-three hundred, contracted services, twenty-seven thousand and some capital expenditures of twenty-five. Total expenditure is one hundred and twenty thousand for a surplus of seventy-one thousand. That leaves you with an accumulated surplus of four hundred and thirty thousand, which is split up between a surplus and a reserve that makes up that balance. So again, this system appears to be self-sustaining, but please review your asset management plan to see what needs to be replaced in the next five or ten years to make sure that you are accumulating the necessary um surplus to fulfill those capital requirements down the road. Any questions on that? Nope. Okay, so last is the management letter. Just give whoever is manning the screen to get to the management letter.
For working on it.
That's okay.
I told him if it wasn't good to hide it.
There it is. So we've now completed the twenty twenty audit and consolidated financial statements for the town of Cobalt. The financial statements show an operational deficit of twenty-seven thousand, three oh one. This deficit, as well as the increase in your long-term debt, has decreased your net financial asset position by two hundred and fifty-seven thousand to two fifty-three. Your financial statements include your share of the financial statements of solar, so that I've called solar, which does negatively impact your financial results. This entity is currently self-sufficient with no cash requirement from the town of Cobalt. Ignoring the deficiency from the partnership, which is simply a bookkeeping entry, your net financial asset position would be six hundred and thirty thousand and your budget-based surplus would be sixty-five thousand and seventy-four dollars. The waterworks and wetlands continue to have surpluses of nine thousand, three twenty-five and seventy-one thousand, eighty-five respectively, which increases their accumulated surpluses. Reviewing your asset management plan and having a ten-year capital budget will allow you to determine if these accumulated surpluses are adequate to meet the capital needs of the systems in the future and will allow you to set your rates accordingly. And that's it for me. Any questions or concerns on anything related to the twenty twenty audit? Okay, so I emailed everybody this afternoon, um a DocuSign um link uh which has all of the signing documents related to the audit itself. So it should be the same letters and financial statements that you normally look at. Um so do have a look at your DocuSign documents. If anybody has any questions, let me know. The first document that's in there are the financial statements, and the mayor and the CEO um will sign off on them, approving it on behalf of council. There is also a representation letter there for all of council to sign and approve. And by signing that representation letter, the town is now taking responsibility for their financial statements, and everybody's agreeing to them. Um there is also in there uh the library financial statements to review, and if anybody has any questions, do let me know. But the library financial statements also form part of your statement, so their numbers would have been incorporated in tonight's review. Um and then in there is also the engagement letter for next year. So if everybody can review the documents, um we asked that if possible, they be signed by Friday, so we can release your FIR and your financial statement to the ministry. Um and that finished up the year end, but if anybody has any questions in the meantime, feel free to contact um John or myself, and we can answer any questions you may have. If you have technical difficulties signing the documents, also let us know, and a hard copy can be provided. Um but so far, I think most of everybody is able to sign, so I'm confident you guys can all do it. Um does any, ever have a few random questions here related to the twenty twenty audit? Does anybody have any fraud concerns or concerns about financial propriety related to anything um assets or financial of the town itself? Does anybody know of any lawsuits or any other claims against the municipality or anything that's happened since December thirty-first that we should be made aware of? When it comes to lawsuits or claims, things that would not be covered by your insurance um that we, that may be more recent or something that we may not be aware of? Nope. Okay, so that's it for twenty twenty. I have a quick little presentation for twenty twenty-one. John, should I do that now? Yeah, okay. So for twenty twenty-one audit, um we are required to meet with councils, so I'll make this quick. Again, our engagement letter engaging us to be the audits for next year are in that signing package. Um if it's a problem signing it right now, then it's not a problem. I can resend the package without the engagement letter, and we can sign it on a later date. Just let me know. Does anybody have any concerns or questions about the audit process or what we do? Does anybody know of any areas where they believe are higher risk, where we should spend more out of time? Does anybody have any knowledge of fraud or any concerns about possible fraud? Internal control discussion. I do discuss this every year. You do not have twenty people in your finance department uh for proper segregation of duties and controls to be in place. So the onus is on council to review reports and pay attention. If you are the second signature on checks, never pre-sign a check. Always review the invoices that go along with the check to make sure that who the check is written to and the amounts um are correct and that you're reviewing the invoice to make sure that the expenditure is appropriate um and that you're aware of what's going on. If you're reviewing reports monthly, do make sure you ask questions and that you're always aware of what's going on. Um and that just uh prevents some errors and irregularities in your systems. And that's it for me. Any other questions or concerns? You are a quiet bunch. That's it. I'm done, John.
Thank you very much, Danielle. Good job.
Thank you, Danielle. Very well done. Much appreciated.
No problem. You guys all have a good night.
You too. Take care. Nice seeing you again.
You too. Bye.
Okay, be it resolved that council accept the twenty twenty financial statement as presented by Kemp, Elliott and Blair, chartered professional accountants. A mover and a seconder, please. Matt and Joe. Any questions or comments? You've already had that. No. All in favor? Carry. There is no business arising from the delegations, obviously. Uh item nine, staff and committee reports, public works. Any questions of the public works report? Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, through your worship, um um a couple of questions. Pay on public works, the anti-aircraft gun uh has been relocated to the Senate tap. And we have style of the walkway. That's fine, and that's great. Uh I'm just wondering about the uh memorial that's down at the uh public works. Does anybody have an idea when it's going to be relocated?
No, I'm still working on that. As soon as I can find a way of installing it level, because the bottom is is rough, we will be getting it done.
And uh I presume it's going to go up at the Senate tap?
Yes, most definitely.
To your worship. The other question is, uh I I see on the water plant that uh they've already got a problem with the, one of the seals um and they're looking for a warranty. Is that, how long is that pump and running, do you know, or offhand?
No idea, but I'm sure the works department guys can tell us that. Uh EXP is looking into the warranty for us.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship.
Go ahead, Matt.
Through your worship. I guess my comments are in addition to Counselor Givani's. We invested a lot of money in that water plant. And I see some alarming points here. I live come to with a leak. Higher than normal turbidity. Uh low pre-flarine alarms after a filling cycle, contacting the programming service that we use, contacting EXP, looking into warranty. My, my concern here is, are are we hearing um immediate dialogue or immediate response from EXP on these issues?
As far as I know, we, EXP has been extremely cooperative. But if you wish, we could maybe invite them to council to discuss these matters.
I would appreciate that. I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I'd like to speak to someone at EXP just to get some clarification because these points are rather alarming.
Okay, we'll try and set up the time and a place when we can get them.
Well, thank you, your worship. The uh only part of this has to do with uh yes, the the actual gray water pump number two that is no longer functioning, has a leak, is it a pump that the is uh was put in service in two thousand and four and it's just simply worn out. Um so they did run into some issues in the last little while um that happened because of this leak issue. So they've been attending to it um as a team, and I think doing an excellent job. Uh the one malfunctioning pump, pump that uh EXP is going to look at is just a small part of it. So um I believe they're on it and working with Aqua closely and and have gone past most of the problems that uh you see here in the report.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, um I mean, getting back to the issue with the uh the seal leaking, uh I mean, seals do leak on pumps. I mean, that's for sure, but I mean, uh they should be getting a certain amount of hours. It'd be nice to know the operating hours. I'm not sure to take, taking track of the operating hours, but from my understanding, these are brand-new pumps. And so they would be, there wouldn't be that many operating hours on that pump. So, you know, yeah, I again, I'm going to say that uh seals will leak eventually, but there has to be a certain amount of hours before that happens. And I'm concerned that the, that uh and I I'm on the understanding that they're brand-new pumps, so uh they shouldn't be leaking. In my opinion.
We uh can't say a lot more about it because we don't know. We're going to wait for results from uh what EXP come up with, and we'll let you know. But I do agree with you, pumps to last longer than that. Go ahead, Joe. I see the upcoming paving of various areas. Is there a list where they're going to be paving?
Yes, the the areas have been identified, and I can put that list together and circulated to council tomorrow.
Okay. Item number ten, correspondence for council direction. Ten point one, inter-municipal service agreement, POA Provincial Offense Act approval and the repealing of Tomis coming shores by law twenty or two thousand dash sixty-five be considered. Be it resolved that council accept correspondence from the city of Tomis me shores that sets out the new grouping of municipal members and repeals the current bylaw. A mover and a seconder, please? Pat and Doug? Is there any discussion on the matter? All in favor? Carried. Okay, ten point two is another housekeeping uh resolution, housekeeping resolution to amend the solid waste management schedule that allows ticketing for garbage that is deposited on public lands. Be it resolved that by law, two thousand fifteen dash zero one six, solid waste management schedule, A section eight point one point five will be amended to add one pursuant to section four twenty-nine of the municipal act, SO two thousand and one, C twenty-five, as amended. Section eight point one point five of this bylaw is designated as a continuing offense. A mover and a seconder, please? Bill? And Angela? Any discussion on it? All in favor? Carried. Okay, ten point three is a renewal of the contract by the bylaw enforcement uh services. Be it resolved that council renew the contract for a three-year period at the existing rate, but an annual review of mileage rates. A mover and a seconder, please? Doug, Pat, discussion? Questions, comments? Go ahead, Matt.
Through your worship, I am uh quite impressed with the efforts of our current bylaw official. I work with him on a number of uh concerns myself, and he's always been very prompt. His knowledge is on point, and if he doesn't have an answer to something, he's quite good at getting back to you within a short period of time. So I'm in uh full, uh full agreement with extending the contract.
Bill?
Yeah, through your worship, uh I totally agree with Counselor Johnson. Uh he's doing an excellent job for us and uh glad that uh we're going to renew his contract.
Excellent. Any more comments? All in favor of renewing his contract? All in favor, uh carried? Uh item ten point four, correspondence from DSAB concerning municipal concerns on their use of reserve funds. Be it resolved that council accept correspondence items as presented. A mover and a seconder, please? Pat? Who would he seconding? Uh Doug, is there a discussion? Questions? All in, uh go ahead, Angela.
I read that letter, and they said that they've um corrected the uh error. Have they corrected the error for every municipality, or are they just focused on the one where the error was found?
Go ahead, John, please.
Our under, our understanding from DSAB was that the only errors were involved in the eventual area alongside uh Ingleheart.
Angela?
I guess I have concerns about that because the I guess I have concerns about that because the Coleman Cobalt is the same situation as Avanturel Ingleheart. And I know that from living both areas. In the past. And we share the same postal code as Coleman.
We have asked about it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Pat.
Uh, in amongst all the, uh, the newspaper report I read and the various emails that went through. I do recall reading that when. They went to check and resolve that error, that they checked all of the municipalities. At the same time, just to make sure. So I think they've done their due diligence. If I read it right, but. That's, that was my recall that they had done their due diligence on all of them. Because we have asked that question of them before, you know, with Cobalt Coleman.
Okay, any more questions? All in favor? Is there any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Good evening. Let me first start by saying that I'm a proud Canadian. And this isn't about cancellation of Canada Day. But a chance to show the respect and empathy to our indigenous populations as these tragic, tragic events continue to unfold. I recognize that this is a controversial issue. But on a day when we are to celebrate all that is Canadian, ignoring a portion of our population as they continue to mourn. Is inappropriate and not very Canadian. The cancellation of Canada Day isn't a true cancellation. Nor does it fall under that cancel culture banner that we have seen thrown around quite often. It is changing the narrative of Canada, the good, to, we need to send a clear message to our government. That our indigenous peoples are deserving of far better treatment. The fireworks carnival rides and all overall jubilation of the day. Without recognition of the tragic event that is still unfolding is insulting. To the First Nations, Maity and Inuit peoples of our country. We can show support by wearing an orange shirt on July first, by taking an indigenous people's course online. By reading up on and understanding how terrible the Indian Act really is. By reading up on residential schools and the attempted religious genocide that existed until the late nineties. And to degrees still exists to this day as there is a residential school still in operation. In, uh, north, northwest territories, sorry. And by addressing systematic racism and acknowledging that it does exist here in Canada against the first peoples and true owners of this land that we call home. And those are just a few ways that you can show your support. To celebrate without at least acknowledging the pain and mourning is insulting. And it follows the government's continued narrative and actions. Of ignoring the very real human rights issues that exist right here in Canada. If we are to cancel the positive feeling that Canada Day normally has and replace it with a genuine reflection and a day of mourning. Just for one year. It will be far more than the government has done for our First Nation, Maity and Inuit peoples. This isn't supposed to divide people. This is a chance to truly bring everyone together and to show that we truly are one nation united. So this Canada Day, let's make it about that. Let's stand united with our indigenous brothers and sisters and mourn. The terrible events that are continuing to unfold and the children that have died. Needlessly at the hands of both the government and church. Thank you.
Are any more comments?
Hey, um. Give me just a second here, sorry, I was trying to get rid of the mosquitoes that are visiting. Um, I said, so. I, I actually had to put my thoughts down on paper because my brain is really spun in circles on this. Um, since this all come to light. So what happened is horrible, however, we had nothing to do with that. Personally, I did not. Um, I had nothing to do with the residential school. I had nothing to do with the Indian Act that these atrocities happened under. Well, as a parent, I feel very much for the parents of those children. I feel that canceling Canada Day will have a negative result instead of a positive result. I see no reason why it can't be both a day of celebration and a day of recognition. By trying to erase the past. All we're doing is erasing the lesson that we can learn and bring forward to the future. So that we don't repeat the same mistakes in the future. There are much better ways to show support. There's a lady in Lively that's done orange lawn flags. All she's requesting is a donation and the proceeds of those donations. Are going to indigenous groups, various indigenous groups and to the Cambrian College, which will use them for indigenous studies within their programs. There's things like this that we can do to show our support. Because at the end of the day, when I ran for council, I made a promise to represent all of the ratepayers in our town. So. And I don't think that by canceling Canada Day, we're giving everybody a fair voice. So at this time, I don't think that is something that I can support. However, I do think there should be some recognition during the day for. The deaths that occurred at the residential schools.
Yes, uh, through you, your worship, uh, I have my ribbon. I, I understand, uh, Counselor, I said what she said about. Our generation had nothing to do, uh. With the atrocities that they found, uh, with all the dead children. But for me, I, I mentioned it on my, one of my emails, I am Maity, I'm a proud Maity. And I'm a member of an organization, so. I stated on the email that I had sent out that I would not be celebrating or partaking in any of the festivities. Uh, that are going to happen on July first, having said that, um. I'm not here trying to influence anybody, uh, just for me. I just think by cancelling the day and using it as a day of recognition for those children that died. It would be a great sign of respect and it would be, you know, coming from council, uh, from the town of Cobalt, uh, it would go a long way showing that respect. I haven't too much to say on it other than, um. It hit a lot of people that I know, I know a lot of First Nation people and, uh, it really hit them hard. I never thought in my, in my time. Uh, that something like this would have happened, it just came to light, I never thought this was possible, but it's, it's out there, so we have to deal with it. And, um. I'm supporting, uh. That we cancel the activities on Canada Day. But I just want to make clear also that, uh, I'm not going to hold it against anybody on this council if they decide not to or whatever. Uh, it's my decision and, uh. I hope you can respect that, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Wilcox. Counselor, are, are you recording this?
I'm not recording on my computer guide, so I'm using.
Go ahead, Counselor Wilcox.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, first of all, let me say I, I, I have genuine heartfelt. Uh, sorrow for what has been done to. The, uh, native population of our country through these residential. School programs. Uh, those acts are horrible even to contemplate. Uh, they certainly would seem to be a crime against humanity and as what I understand the definition of that term to be. Uh, and I certainly think the town of Cobalt should be acknowledging. The harm done to that population and our support for a. As quick a resolution as we can affect for it. I. Look at a number of things in all of these considerations. Uh, and, and I think first of all. I would like to say out front, I'm not in favor of canceling Canada Day, uh, for a number of reasons. I too am a proud Canadian, I love this country, this is the country I intend to continue living in because I think it's the best in the world. And if I, 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 I have a right to celebrate that and so does every other Canadian. But that said, obviously, we have a very dark chapter in our history. And we cannot ignore that either. Uh, what, what was done is unconscionable. And I think supporting our native friends is the least we can do. But I would think it would be more helpful if first of all. We do everything we can to encourage our governments and the courts to speed this process through. But I think it's important, we follow all of the due legal steps to make sure everything is done properly, formally. And. Is solidly in place at the end of the day. There are no easy solutions, everything I've read and seen from native leaders, from our own leaders. All point out the difficulty in arriving at what will be a final solution, I don't know if we have one. Uh, other than time and understanding. Uh, so I hope we can do that. But on a local level, I know our Lions Club. Uh, uh, under Kyle Odette have put in a lot of work preparing for Canada Day. Uh, festivities for families to partake in. In part as a celebration just to see the ending of a pandemic and the eighteen months of being locked down. And getting people out into fresh air and thinking positive thoughts. And for that, we can be grateful and we can celebrate. There are good things, uh, about Canada, uh, good things in our history. I think we're an outstanding country as far as trying to bring forward issues of human disparities. You know, I note, there are a number of countries who are continuing to do what we have done. But at least in our country, we held a. Truth and reconciliation committee that unearthed horrendous stories from survivors of the residential programs. And what we have seen lately with the discovery of the children's graves. Is a confirmation of all of those tales that have been told. And it's a damning confirmation. And, and it, it frustrates me, it angers me, uh, it upsets me. And I would urge all, and, and I would suggest perhaps a, an amendment to this motion would be that. The town of Cobalt urge all of us residents tomorrow or on, on Canada Day to take time to reflect on what's happened. To see what solutions we might be able to be active in. Uh, there are steps we can take, I know, you know, the, the Lions Club. They, they tried to organize a baseball game between a, a native baseball team and ourselves and unfortunately it fell through. Due to scheduling conflicts. But they're working hard to try and find ways to resolve this in a meaningful way and an inclusive way. And I think we should emulate that, I think it's important. That we all reach out to one another. I see North Bay has decided to put an orange light on their city hall on Canada Day. Which I think is a great start. But I think I would encourage everybody. To celebrate Canada Day if you're so inclined. For our indigenous peoples, I can fully understand you might not want to celebrate it in view of the recent revelations. But have your own day of celebration for the people you are and where we might be in the future. Those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Wilcox, is there any more comments? Go ahead, Pat. You're muted, Pat. Pat?
There we go, got it. So I've always enjoyed celebrating all that's so good about our country because we do have many good things. But I will say that since first getting into debates back in nineteen sixty-four in, in high school. And that's when I learned about the, uh, the, the schools and, uh. That's, that's been something that. Left me with anger and embarrassment at, um. The Canadian government and the associated churches from back in this day, those days. And I think we're just beginning to with, we're just beginning to come to grips with it. Um. To me, it was just the finding, actual finding of the graves. Um, I knew they had to be there. So this is a very raw wound for all the people at this point. But. I'd still like to be able to have everyone included in enjoying their day as best they can. Now, what I really would like to see is that. Bringing this all forward, and I appreciate what you two have done, bringing this all forward. I hope that we can, in the very near future. Um. Have the people organize a day of education for us, demonstrations, um. However, a, a day or a weekend. Uh, so that the rest of us can get to know the culture much better. Because I think this is where we're going to get. Understanding and, um, understanding on our colonial white peoples part. Uh, and hopefully healing with the, uh, indigenous population. Cause I'd like to see that, I know we had tried in years with, um, Miners Festival. And, uh, because we were on a big August first weekend that conflicted with everything else. And that was the only reason why we never had events like that, um, incorporating. It was just conflicts everywhere, but I'd like to, to me, I want to see this, this becomes. An education process for us and that we, we all learn from it. And that we do take time to share their grief and, um. And remember what's going on because. Um, I know back in sixty-four when I learned about it, I was sickened, so. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, is there any more comments? Joe?
After hearing all the graves being found was really troubling. Um, I'll be naive about it, I've barely heard anything about these schools. I don't recall it being in our school curriculum. Maybe we should start putting that more heavily into the curriculum to teach our young. Um, what Pat said about having. The Indigenous Society teach us, this would be an avenue to go, I would think. Education will solve all problems, I strongly believe in that. Now cancelling Canada Day, I can't go for that, it's. This event here in Cobalt is called Canada Day, but mostly if you look, it's all geared to children. And this is exactly what happened with the indigenous people, they lost their children. We're going to cancel everything for the children to be locked down for so long? A lot of people say it hasn't been that long in comparison, you're right. But let's not create some hatred, hatred will get created, let's try to work together this, this, we all have to come together on this. Um, like Doug said, maybe a moment. Fifteen, twenty minutes of silence, maybe have the indigenous people put on a little display would be nice. Um, with their drumming, their drumming, I believe sends out messages, I would like to learn more about it. Is this a start, communication? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Dubay, uh, Counselor Johnson?
I can certainly appreciate the comments made by my fellow counselors. If we were to read. The motion, it says postponement. This isn't. This isn't about cancelling a day and not. this isn't about cancelling a day and not recognizing the work of our local service clubs. But since bringing this to light, what has been experienced in this small town is a bit concerning. The comments that have been made to my family in particular regarding this.
Point of order, councillor.
I'm sorry?
We're talking about Canada Day.
This is the motion that we're speaking about currently. And I'm speaking to.
I'll let you, I'll let you go on a little longer, but doesn't get personal.
On our website, there was a number of comments and some made by members of the service club that has been mentioned. They have been recorded. And this isn't spinning tales. I'm not the man taking away Canada Day from the children. I'm just speaking to the atrocities and the ability for our municipality to show respect and mourn alongside our indigenous peoples. It says postponement of the Canada Day festivities. It doesn't say cancellation and packing up the event itself. I would appreciate if we could discuss this in a manner that didn't keep using that cancellation term. And we work to a resolution that was amicable for all parties involved. If we can't have discussions around this table that are open for discussion without fear of reprisal or comments, then what are we doing here? This is a situation where we need to show empathy. And that's what I'm asking for today. I'm asking for recognition. And I would appreciate it if we could do just that. If we recognize and come up with a plan and cut down on the nonsensical back and forth, not necessarily here, but that gets caused by overreacting to our motion being posted, for instance. And we have actual discussion that's meaningful and has a goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Johnson. Now, maybe if you could forward that information to the CEO, we could deal with it accordingly.
Thank you.
Is there any more? Councillor Adseth, one more quick one, and then Councillor Wilcox.
I've put forth a suggestion that we find a way to do a celebration and a recognition of the mourning that's being done by the indigenous people. There are various ways we can do it. So we can put them out there, but somebody's got to pull them together and decide what can be done at the short of notice. But I do believe that this should be a choice that's left to each individual. This should not be a choice that we make for everybody.
Thank you. Councillor Wilcox?
Huh, there we go. Can you hear?
Can.
Okay, good. Thank you. Basically, I certainly agree with Councillor Adseth. There are things that we can do, visible things like lowering our flags to half mast on Canada Day. I would be in favor of that. Like North Bay, we could put up some orange lights on City Hall or somewhere in the town and show the orange color in, in, in unity with the First Nations peoples. We could certainly issue a statement on behalf of council, recognizing their pain and suffering and urging the governments to hasten their efforts to resolve this issue. But I still want to maintain a Canada Day. And I want to invite everybody to come out and celebrate what Canada means to them. And I want everyone to be able to come out and think about the dark side of what has happened because it is tragic. It is horrible. But I don't want it to be the end of things. And I understand Matthew's point about postponing rather than actually saying cancelling, but I, I, I'd love to find a middle ground and I thought outlined some things. But I'm all in favor still of helping everybody celebrate in whatever small way they can privately or publicly. Thank you.
I was speaking to the, one of the organizers today, and they are going to be doing something if, down there to acknowledge what has transpired. Okay, I'm going to call the vote of the question now. I would like to have a recorded vote on this. Go ahead, Doug.
I'm just wondering, would we contemplate an amendment to the motion saying that we will issue a statement in support of the native populations? Saying that we will lower the flag, saying that we will do what we can to encourage recognition?
I personally don't have a problem with that. Does, go ahead, Matthew.
I, I'm in favor of amending the motion to reflect what council would like in this situation to show the unity, solidarity and support that we should be showing.
Okay, we're just going, does anybody have a problem with that? I know I don't. To unanimous. Okay, thank you. What would you like in there, Doug? You'd like to have?
Pretty much what I said, that the town of Cobalt issue a formal statement expressing our solidarity and support for our First Nations, Métis and Inuit peoples across Canada and certainly in our area. And as part of that tribute, we would lower our flags on Canada Day to half mast. And that we will do anything else in our power to reflect our support and unity with our First Nations peoples and with our own Canadian peoples.
Thank you. We'll give John a second to catch up here.
Sorry, John.
I don't know if I'll be able to get, I don't know if I'll be able to get all of that, but lowering the at half mast after a formal statement including right after the half mast, Councillor Wilcox, was there something else that you'd like to add?
Just more of a general comment to do what we are able to do in the time allowed to us because it is two days away. It's very difficult, I think, sometimes to put some things together. But if it's, you know, we could buy an orange light and shine it on City Hall. Or, or shine it on the Senate tap or shine it somewhere. I like shining it on City Hall.
I hope you can read that, George.
Okay, you want me to, that's okay, no problem. Do you want me to go through a whole resolution or do you just want me to read the amendment to it?
I, I, motion, George, just so we're all clear.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Canada Day celebration planned for Thursday, July the 1st, 2021 be held over a year and that July the 1st, 2021 instead be a day of mourning, reflection and a show of unity, solidarity and support for the First Nations, Métis and Inuit people across Canada. In light of the unfolding events involving the discoveries of indigenous children remains at numerous residential sites across Canada and that the town of Cobalt council release a statement stating their support for indigenous people as endured this tragedy alongside them. Sorry, if you go ahead. Angela?
Or Doug?
I, I don't think we were saying we wanted it postponed or held over a year. We wanted it amended to read. We were going to do other things, but we were going to still continue.
No, I read the resolution pervade, pervade them. I was just rereading it. I haven't gotten to the new section yet. Go ahead, Doug.
Oh, good. I'm still on. Yeah, I, I, I think that has to be reworked, George. I would say the Canada Day celebrations planned for Thursday, July 1st, 2021 be held, comma, and that July 21st also be a day of mourning, reflection and show of unity, solidarity and support for First Nations. I think that would guide my thoughts on where it should go to.
Okay, we're going to take a little bit of a pause then and give John a chance to redo this. Okay?
Sure.
Sorry, John.
Two minute pause.
I'm just going to excuse myself for just a minute.
Okay, you've got, you've got two minutes. Okay, we're ready to go again. John, you would mind explaining that little, last little comment you gave me there?
Thank you, your worship. The, the emotion before you will be voted on. If the motion is defeated, there will be an amendment or a new motion brought forward with the amended comments that the council can agree on. So either way, whether it passes or if it does not, the contemplation is that a new amendment, a new motion will come forward, including the amendments that were discussed. It'll actually come forward in a new motion. So for the purposes of right now, this motion is to be voted on.
Councillor Adseth?
Sorry, my brain's a little slow. So just to clarify, we're going to vote on this one and then we're going to then immediately vote on the amended one.
Go ahead.
So what is proposed or discussed is that this motion will be voted on, whether it carries or does not carry. There will be another motion coming forward that will include some of the suggestions in hopes of the councillors involved. So it is a bit of a two, two vote stage. But this first one has to be voted on before we can go to the next step.
Okay, I just wanted to ensure it was happening tonight. That's all.
Okay, a recorded vote? Councillor Adseth?
Against.
Councillor Anderson?
Against.
Councillor Dubey? Councillor Gabani? Councillor Johnson? Councillor Wilcox?
Opposed.
And myself, opposed also. Now, we will write up the amendments now and vote on the new, the new motion. Okay. Will just be another second or so here. Okay, I will read the whole motion again. Canada Day celebration planned for Thursday, July the 1st, 2020 be held and that July the 1st, 2021, I'm sorry, it was 2021, the first time too, be a day of mourning, reflection and a show of unity, solidarity and support for the First Nations, Métis and Inuit people across Canada. In light of the unfolding events involving the discoveries of indigenous children remains at numerous residential school sites across Canada and that the town of Cobalt council release a statement stating their support for indigenous people as endured this tragedy alongside them. In addition, the town of Cobalt will also lower flags to half mast and do what we are able with the time remaining prior to July the 1st. Is there any questions or discussion on this? Okay, are we ready to go to a vote? All in favor? Opposed? You guys want that recorded? I guess I should have asked that first thing. Doesn't matter. Yeah. Okay. Oh, sorry. I forgot. We needed a mover in a secondary again, please, for the second motion. Have a mover in a second or please. Doug and Angela. Okay. Eleven point, 11, 11.1. Consideration of a bylaw for the licensing and regulation of residential rental units in the town of Cobalt. Be it resolved that by law 2021-25 being a bylaw for the licensing and regulations of residential rental For the licensing and regulations of residential rental units in the town of Cobalt be given a first and a second reading. A mover and a second or please. Matt and Pat, discussion. Go ahead, Bill.
Thanks, to you, your worship, this is, this is good, this is great. Do we have any idea how many rental units we have in town, or are we gonna be doing? Some sort of blitz that we can find out actually who's renting on places?
I think we have a very good idea of the ones that are registered. There are the ones that we don't know about are the ones that are, we would like to know about.
So how how do you plan on finding out?
Word of mouth is probably the only way. I'm not sure, we have something in the office with the rental units?
We believe, we believe this is going to be a fairly onerous task on the part of administration for sure. To get this done and looked at, although I think it's very important to do so because of the the situation where you have in Cobalt with the absentee landlords and. Delinquent accounts and most particularly homes lived in that do not have water and sewer and everything else, so. So it it it's an excellent opportunity, but we also recognize that there's gonna be a fair amount of work in doing this. And and that's why it's given a first and second reading for more comments, a number of municipalities are going this way for sure. And with the plan being implementing this January one of next year.
Go ahead, Angela. Angela, you're muted.
Sorry, okay, let me go back to the beginning. I have a bit of a problem, and maybe it's just I'm not understanding it. Part four, application of the bylaw section, section four point one, part A, item. Two, double I, the unit was occupied by the registered owner immediately prior to its rental. What's that have to do with whether it's a rental or it's not a rental unit? Because it says this bylaw shall not apply to. If the owner's no longer residing there, does it not become a rental unit?
If it's okay, worship, I'll take that, those comments under consideration and. Look into it as we bring this banner back for a third reading.
Okay, yeah, because I don't think it should matter.
Doug?
Oh, thank you, your worship. I I hate to be the guy who comes out with this all the time, but when I look at that and we 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 are imposing another fee on top of landlords. And unfortunately, I think in the real world, that fee just gets passed on to people who are renting. And I'm wondering if the fee structure that we have there is the most reasonable that we could come up with. Perhaps John could address that. You know, it's seven units, four hundred and twenty five dollars a year. All other owners with a municipal mailing address here, fine, outsiders is a little bit higher. So there has been an accommodation, but I'm just wondering, is it the best accommodation we could do?
Okay, certainly, we're looking for input, the fees, a number of the fees were suggested to be where they are at by input from council or councillors. They're probably middle of the road, certainly less than major cities. In some cases, especially the upfront fees, a little bit more for midsize cities. So part of the review after the second and first and second reading will be looking at a closer look at the fees.
Thank you.
Councillor Anderson.
I do, I do agree that if. The fees unfortunately will get passed on to the renters, so. The important thing, I think, is not charging a big fee. But identifying and making sure that all those rental units are safe. That's the most important part. And the other thing I wanted to ask from reading through there, so. DSAB units and the one in, the ones in the back of the the Fraser, they're not included in this. And I think they should also be included so that they get the same amount of scrutiny as well to make sure they're good. That's it.
Thank you, councillor Adsett.
I'd like to speak to to the fee structure. I think it's appropriate, and I'm gonna explain my rationale why, because I'm one of the ones that suggested this fee structure. Unfortunately, yes, it will be passed on to an extent to the tenants. Maybe not in every case. But when you're talking seven units, that's, that's a pretty onerous. Undertaking for somebody to be renting out, and it just triply makes them responsible. For not just the quality of their living accommodations, but also the quality of the tenants that they're going to be renting to. Which has also been a concern by the residents in Cobalt. And anybody who resides beside any rental units would wholeheartedly agree from any conversations. Any conversations I've had with any of the residents who do live in the vicinity of some of these units.
Okay, we'll consider that, take it into consideration, any more comments, questions? Okay, all in favor? Passing a person second. Thank you, carried. General bit, general business schedule of accounts. Be it resolved that council receive the following schedule as presented, schedule number twenty twenty one dash eleven and the amount of. One hundred and forty seven thousand, two hundred and fifty two dollars and twenty one cents. A mover and a second or please. Matt and Doug. All any questions or comments on the schedule of accounts? All in favor? Carried. Motion for which prior notice has been given, none. Mayor's report, none. Notice of motion, we don't have any. Councillor updates. Councillor Anderson, you said you want to speak. On Golden Age Club.
Yes, the Golden Age Club has an opportunity to apply for seniors community grant program. And I'd ask if we could get a letter, the scene, the Golden Age could get a letter of support from the town for this grant. Because we found out about it late, and then by the time we could have an in-person executive meeting, which is the only way we can do. We're just putting it together, but I will be talking to Tanya and Lit from the government on Monday. And seeing exactly what we can do, and then I can pass that on to John for what to include in the in the letter if we could. And as well, one of the projects they talked about years ago was. Going to be using part of the parking lot, so that's a consideration too, we should start to think quickly. We only have until the fifteenth of July to get all this in, so I will be rather busy with it in this time, but. If we could do that, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much, is there any more councillor updates? Council question and answers? Go ahead, councillor Adsett.
Um, I I know that it's only coming up to the beginning of July. But can we get a refresher on the Davis property management contract and what the annual fee of that is in the next meeting, please?
I'm sure we can.
Thank you.
Any other councillor comments? Okay, updates then. Okay, confirmation by law. Be it resolved that by law number twenty twenty one dash twenty six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. The corporation of the town of Cobalt be taken as read a first and second and third time and finally passed this twenty ninth day of June, twenty twenty one. And further that said by law be signed by the mayor and clerk and recorded in the bylaw book. Over in a second or please. Pat and Angela, all in favor? Carried. Adjournment. Be it resolved that the regular meeting of council be adjourned at eight thirteen mover and second or? Doug and Matt, all in favor? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Okay.